The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'm going to call the council to order. Let the roll reflect that all council members are present and a quorum has been established. Council, we have before us tonight the regular meeting, the minutes of the regular meeting, on August 3rd, 2015. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. Next, we'll have a presentation in regards to the LaDuke Civil War Weekend. We have Amy Deaver here, who's the site manager of the LaDuke Mansion, and we have an exciting event coming up representing the year of 1865.
We do. Yes, 1865 this year. I decided to get dressed up for you because whereas my reenactors always want me to dress up for Civil War Weekend, I sometimes have to climb through windows. And so, I don't usually dress up for that event. So, I thought I'd show you. You know, this is about as good as it gets for Amy, yeah. Yeah, we are very fired up for the weekend, and I am very excited because just today, about an hour ago, I have the preliminary schedule for both Saturday and Sunday, which this is a first for me. Usually, I am completing the schedule about two days in advance of the Civil War. So, I'm feeling much better about this one coming up. We will be doing a number of fun exhibits this year. Les Misérables, the book, became a very popular item during the Civil War. It was the hot reading material during the Civil War. All Civil War soldiers were waiting for the next installment in Harper's Weekly. And so, we're going to have an exhibit on that. I have two interns from St. Thomas who are working very closely with me. So, we'll have some lovely exhibits. And in addition, something very exciting and something we've done in the past but not for many years, we have a George Daniels reenactor. So, George Daniels was the escaped, he was conscripted to fight for the South, and he escaped during the course of battle and ended up fighting in the same regiment as William LaDuke. And he actually came to Hastings after the war and was his hired hand for many, many years. And so, he unfortunately had to live in their carriage barn, and so during the Civil War, he will be, I don't think we'll make him sleep in the carriage barn, but he will be there most of the weekend with us. So, that will be always fun. And then, in addition, of course, we'll have the Gatling gun and the cannon will be returning this year. They're always happy to come. And we'll have the drills and all the hubbub, lots of war. I was trying to describe our site for Civil War to one of our, to the reenactors. So, of George Daniels. And I said, "One site is allocated to guns." We have the guns, we have the soldiers, we have the cannons. And on the other side, the Third Minnesota represents the Soldiers Aid Commission. They do the Sunday morning service, they do the medical demonstration. So, we sort of have death on one side of the house and then healing and, you know. So, it's a wonderful setup. It works really well. Other than that, we will have a couple speakers for the event. Actually, this time, we will have two speakers each day, so we're really excited about that. And of course, one of the highlights of our event is, if you will notice on your program, council members, in red, we have the Gettysburg Address. And Paul, Mayor Hicks, just kindly agreed to read on Saturday. And Councilman Alangi, if you would be willing to read on Sunday, we would love to have you. You'd be willing to do that? Thank you.
And just for the sake of the audience at home, because I'm not sure that we've said it, and I'm not sure it's on the material here, we're talking about this weekend, this Saturday and this Sunday. Do I have that right, or are we talking about next?
No, no, no. This is quite a bit. This is September 12th and 13th.
September 12th and 13th, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably put that on the next version, which dates.
Yeah, exactly. Well, we had this out the day of, so.
Fair enough.
Yeah, so it is coming up September 12th and 13th.
September 12th and 13th, okay.
At the site. And we are, we're very excited about it.
I'm available that weekend, too.
Yeah, yeah, good, good, good. I'm glad you're available that weekend, too. But there'll be lots of music. We have a brass band, and we have our, our regular musicians. The new Pearl Buttons will be performing, and so there'll be a lot of lovely events, as well as our reenactors looking much better than I'm looking will be there in full regalia also. So, thank you, city, for letting us continue. I absolutely adore my job at the LaDuke, so thank you for continuing to support us at the LaDuke and in all the ways that you do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Amy, and thank you for all you're doing there. The LaDuke Mansion continues to be a success and a great interest to many Minnesotans, as well as Hasonites, so.
Very much so. And we very much look forward to, I will be back on October 5th. Melanie has agreed that we can come back. I will be bringing our Eagle Scouts. By the end of September, we will have four Eagle Scout projects that will have been completed. So, I will look forward to coming back with those crews. They've just done amazing things at the site.
Fantastic. We'll see you on September 12th, for sure.
Definitely.
One of my favorite events. Thank you.
You bet. Thanks.
Next, council, we have council items to be considered. You have at the, in front of you there on your desk, two items that we'd like to add to the consent agenda. One relates to the Outdoor Music and Liquor License Amendment to the Coliseum Sports Bar and Grill. The second one is a temporary one-day gambling permit for the Hastings Football Connections. So, I just want you to know that those are items that will be asked to be put on consent. And so, with that, I'll go to the consent calendar, Councilmember Schultz.
I can give you a motion to add these.
Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to add both of these items onto the consent calendar, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have reports from city staff, Public Works. Nick, welcome.
We have a motion to amend.
Oh, did I? Oh, excuse me, we just voted on the amendment, didn't we? Okay, consent agenda, excuse me, Nick, consent agenda as amended. Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to, okay, approve, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion prevails. My apologies. Nick, welcome to the meeting this evening, and we have change order number two, the Riverfront Renaissance Phase. Please go ahead.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Hicks and council members. Really, kind of a procedural thing as to why we placed the change order item where we did in the agenda. Typically, these are consent agenda items, but what we've got tonight is approval of the pay estimate that has some of the items that are contained within the change order on it. So, we wanted them to go sequentially for formal approval. What this change order contemplates is a few added quantities of work items that were already in the contract, some adjustments that we made as we've had things evolve on the project site to widen some concrete pedestrian path areas in and around the pavilion so that we can do better maintenance access there for our sanitary sewer line. And then, we had a couple of changes with some concrete sidewalk materials over at the entrance to the parking lot off Sibley Street, realizing that we wanted to take care of setting up the pattern that we're planning to implement for Phase Three with the red-stamped concrete. So, we added that in as a new item. It was not in the contract before. There are a couple other things within the change order that we also tackled during the parking lot construction, namely, some drain tile that had to be installed to combat this subsurface water infiltration that we were seeing there, and it was causing a few sinkhole problems. I don't know if I had shared with everyone, but there were a number of old foundations under part of the footprint of the parking lot, and they weren't necessarily all completely removed back when the lot was redone some 30 years ago. And we ran into an awful lot of that stuff with this round, but it also created pockets and holes underneath there that nobody really could assess or tell the severity of. So, we see that show up now when we get rainstorms, and before, we were covering the lot completely. So, we had to contend with that. And then, lastly, we did install a conduit over on the Ramsey Street end at the alley to set things up for potential undergrounding of power within that space in the future. So, that's just a brief recap of what change order two entails. It has a value of about $27,000 that would be added to the total contract. It's about, equates to about 1% of the overall contract value. You may recall, we did do change order number one back in April when we added work into this contract to cover the Phase One items that were not being completed with the contractor default. So, those things were paid for, or will be paid for here with Phase One budgeted dollars. So, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Hicks, and I'll stand for questions.
Okay, council, Councilmember Balsanik.
Hey, Mayor. I was looking over emails this afternoon. Got an update from the city administrator on the newsletter, and it was said in that newsletter, the additional items that were added to it said that everything in Phase One is done. So, is everything in Phase One?
That's right. Yes, it is, council member.
And this, this one is for, this one is for Phase Two. This is for Phase Two.
Correct. Correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Council, we're on change order number two. What's your wish? Councilmember Alangi makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Balsanik. That motion is now before the body. Is there further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have the pay estimate number three for the Riverfront Renaissance Phase Two.
Not much here to talk about. As I mentioned a moment ago, typically, pay estimates are covered under consent agenda, but due to the sequencing, we wanted to extract that and put it here. This pay estimate is a pretty sizable one relative to the last one. It's now $430,000 for all of the work items that she, he has completed through the end of July. So, that stands for discussion and.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. Council, what's your wish? Councilmember Alangi.
Thank you. I just want to check in, and this may be more with you, Your Honor, than, or with Melanie than it is with Nick, but I just want to make sure by doing this, all we're doing is just getting a pay estimate. We're not committing ourselves to a specific design of any element of Phase Three. We're simply just getting a sense of how much this might cost. Do I have that right, or do we need to redirect what we're trying to do here? Because Phase Three is still very much in the works, and we're getting a lot of feedback from the community as to elements and options.
Your Honor and council, this is actually for Phase Two, the project that we're working on this year. This is Phase Two.
Pay estimate number three.
Pay estimate number.
The third invoice.
Estimate three of Phase Two. Well, that's a relief.
Yeah.
Excellent. It's good to know that something for Phase Two doesn't bind us to anything in Phase Three. Well done, once again, by staff. Champion thinking.
So, this is pay estimate number three for the Phase Two work.
Excellent.
Okay. Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Brox. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have before the council, a proposal to authorize work by, for Specialty Engineering Services, WSB. Nick?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Hicks. Councilmembers, the item before you is to authorize staff and WSB and associates to begin some specialty design work on the Vermillion River Greenway Trail Project. This is a project that the city and Dakota County partnered on to apply for a grant from the Federal Department of Transportation back in 2011. And through that process, in 2012, we learned that we were ranked very highly, and we're going to be granted funding for the 2015-2016 construction timeline. And so, now, we're fast approaching that, and there's a number of final design things that we need to do on this project, including some final surveying to set up our alignment. Got a map on the screen there for you to show the impacted segments. This trail would connect with an area near the Vermillion Gorge Bridge, through and behind Mindot's Truck Station, and then up and behind the Minnesota Veterans Home building on the north side of 18th Street, ultimately ending in CP Adams Park, where we already have trail existing. And then, we have another portion that would connect a couple of pieces within the park itself. So, as I mentioned, we're looking to begin our final design work, and the items that WSB would be assisting us with is designing a specialty structure in this area. I've got a couple of these photos also in the packet, but this is right behind the steam plant building that the Veterans Home owns and operates. It's very tight in there, and the concern from them, as well as Mindot, was that we ought not combing pedestrian bicycle traffic with their vehicular access that goes in and behind the building. However, you can't see it real well in the photo due to the foliage, but just on the other side of that guardrail and some of the trees there is quite a drop-off to the Vermillion River, some 60 feet or so. And so, in order to develop the horizontal space, we need to fit the trail through there. We'll need to construct either a bridge or a cantilevered platform-type structure through part of this area. City staff definitely doesn't have the expertise on that sort of design. This is definitely something that's in the wheelhouse of a specialty consultant, and WSB has helped us on other trail and structural projects in the recent past. So, we liked what we saw from them and requested a proposal for that work, for some soil boring exploration work that'll be needed to set up the design, and also for the surveying that'll be necessary on the segment from this area over to the Vermillion Gorge. So, we collect all that information and have it available to do the rest of the trail design work internally. All told, their proposal's about $88,000, and we need to begin the work in earnest here in order to meet certain deadlines for submittals with Mindot as they do a final review on this and give us an authorization to go towards construction. I should have started out by saying our grant amount is about $800,000 on this. We think this is an $800,000 project. The grant only covers construction. It doesn't cover design and project management and engineering. That's where the city's participation comes in. So, things such as this design work and doing the inspections next year will come on the city's cost. And what we are proposing to do here to fund this work is tap into some unspent staff dollars. We've got three vacancies on the engineering side that have slowly been building up unspent dollars since the early part of the year, when those folks departed or moved into different positions. So, we've got that available. Don't typically spend those dollars on outside design work, but with the time sensitivity and the nature of what we've got for internal resources right now, we're recommending utilizing some of that to help get us through with this process and carry it forward. So, I can stand for questions.
Council, this issue is before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Balsanik.
Seems like we could save a lot of money. This looks like a great spot for a zip line. Right on down, 60-foot drop. What's going to be the elevation on the trail, and is it going to be the same as the driveway?
It'll be very similar to that pavement surface there, yes.
Obviously, not any higher, but maybe just a little lower some. There's not going to be any, concern I have is that nobody's going to be jumping from the trail to the driveway or vice versa.
It'll have to be separated with a fence. That was another request or concern that both Mindot and the Veterans Home had mentioned to us in getting their blessing on going forward with the project.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Alangi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Nick, as I look at the map with the red and the green, the existing trails, the proposed trails, I just have a question about outside the scope of this project. Just want to get a sense of how this fits into the greater plan here. And I know Chris is around, too, and Chris can speak to it if he wishes instead. Veterans Park is on the southern edge of the map.
Lower right corner there.
Lower right corner there. You can see the softball, baseball fields, et cetera. There are actual ways for a bicyclist, for a cyclist or walker to get from that up to this area that aren't existing actual trails. Is that correct? I mean, there are ways for folks who want to take advantage of that area to get through, or is it not really a good access? I just want to get a sense of the context of this, because there's a, because that's a big park right there, and we're working really close to it, and it's not obvious from the map what kind of connections exist.
Yeah, and I'm sorry for that, Councilmember Alangi. Just barely outside the bottom of the photo there, towards the left side, we have our Industrial Park Ravine Trail that we built about six years ago, and that does tie into Veterans Park, just south of the main baseball field. So, there is some interconnectivity there at present.
But we would not expect cyclist traffic or other public traffic to go directly north from Veterans Park up, say, through the Veterans Home property onto this trail? That's not something that we're encouraging or trying to build into this plan, is that correct?
Not with this project, no.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick questions, and I don't know if we broke down the project, Nick, on, I see a redundancy in this map here of a trail kind of up on the south side there. It'd be the northeast, where you see the red with the proposed trail, and you see it, yep, right in that area? Is that, was that part of the big master plan of having that connection there? I see we have. I biked it myself, but instead of going back and cutting back up, you can come up through CP Adams now currently. I'm just looking at long-term maintenance. Looks like a redundant trail that we can still get to the same location, just a different way.
We can. We had a couple ulterior purposes for that connection. One was that there was an existing corridor that was kind of roughed in for with some level of base material down. Secondly, we built up to that point where there's the little bit of a hook here back in 2013 when we did 10th Street to set it up for a maintenance trail also with the sewer line that runs up in and through the park there. So, it would be able to get us that much closer to being able to perform the maintenance functions along that sewer line, too.
There's a sewer line inside the park? Is that what you're trying to?
It runs parallel to much of the trail over and through the park and crosses the river and connects with one of our lift stations and then onward from there.
Yeah, go ahead, councilman.
Just a second question. You mentioned time sensitivity, and I understand that we've got to get moving on this in '15. I'm more, I like the line item, budget items, and that's why taking dollars that weren't spent, I'd rather say in 2016 budget, this dollar is set aside for this project, just so it's earmarked for it. But understanding time sensitivity, are we pushing back this grant, or are we chance of losing it if we have to wait?
We would endanger ourselves from losing part of that because we have to have a contract underway and work taking place before the end of June 2016. And so, working backwards from that through a bidding timeline, through all the approvals that are necessary with Mindot, we feel we've got to get it out the door in their hands by December of this year in order to meet all of those thresholds, all those timelines.
Thank you.
Okay. I just might want to add, too, that we are working with the Veterans Home. You'll recall that we had, this came up earlier this year, and then we had to go back and have further discussions with the Vets Home. The sewer project is very important to them, and so, it's something that we're engaged with the Veterans Home to get the sewer project and the trail and work them concurrently. And so, as to your point, I thought the same thing, Councilmember Balsanik, do we have a redundant trail, but it also serves as a, it'll be a neat going through that type of scenery there, but also because of the sewer lines going through and for future maintenance of that sewer line, it proves valuable. Melanie?
Excuse me, Your Honor and council, just a point of clarification for the budget discussion that Councilmember Vaughn brought up. We do have, this is a line item in the 2016 budget proposal, and as we develop, further develop the budget, we will back out the dollars that we expect to spend in '15, but have those 16 costs proposed in the budget. So, that would be something that the council would be asked to approve.
Okay. I think we still need a motion. Councilmember Balsanik makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. That motion is now before the body. Is there further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Thank you, Nick.
Welcome.
Next, the administration part of our meeting, we have renaming of East Rink, and our distinguished Parks Director is here today to talk to us about that. Chris?
Distinguished, why, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor and council, here tonight to present Park and Recreation Commission's recommendation for renaming of East, the East Rink at the Hastings Civic Arena. The information in your packet kind of lays out how this process went. Began in June of this year with the first meeting. We did receive a formal request from the Hastings Hockey Association in January. We were in the midst of some other naming processes at that time, so we held on to that request until we could pay or give it its full attention. So, in June, the Parks and Recreation Commission met to start this process. From that point, we began to solicit name suggestions from the community through social media, website, newspapers, whatever outlet we had for suggestions to come to us. So, we began to build a list. Those names came in. We met again in July with a full-blown list of names that's also included in the packet. The commission considered those names and came out with three. One was no change, East Rink. One was Magree Rink, and one was Magree East Rink. Those were the three that the Park and Rec Commission went to reconsider in July. Yes, June, July. And then, ultimately, Park and Rec Commission, through much consideration and evaluating all the information that was provided, came to Magree East Rink as the, their recommendation. From past naming processes, we brought this to the Park and Rec Committee of Council, so council members Nelson, Brox, and Balsanik. We met and discussed the Park and Rec Commission's recommendation, and ultimately, Park and Rec Committee supports that recommendation and has forwarded it on to Park and Rec, or, sorry, to full council tonight. You'll also note in there, one of the requirements for renaming of a facility, any cost incurred, is that of the nominating party. We do have confirmation from the Hastings Hockey Association that all expenses that'll be related to the renaming of East Rink will be covered by the association, as well as a recognition plaque that kind of explains the significance of Sliver-Magree. So, with that, the council is asked tonight to consider Magree East Rink as the new name for the East Rink at the Hastings Civic Arena. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris, for that presentation. Appreciate that. Council, this item is before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Balsanik makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Brox. That motion is now before the body. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Vaughn?
I just want to confirm what you had put in here. It's still the Hastings Civic Arena, just inside the doors. It's the Magree East Rink.
Correct. It will, is, has always intended to be the Hastings Civic Arena. We have the East and the West Rink. Now, we have considered, to be considered, Magree East Rink and West Rink.
Thank you.
Councilmember Balsanik.
Yes, thank you, member. One of the things that the Park and Rec Committee of the council had talked about is to place a plaque somewhere in the immediate vicinity of the entrance to the, to the East Rink, explaining background information about, I finally figured out what his first name was. Jim Magree. I've been calling him Sliv for years. Saw him this, saw him this morning out at Bellwood Oaks again. But that there would also be a plaque that would go along, giving background information as to who Sliv is, and that, that some background information would also be, correct me if I'm wrong, but you were going to be sending some background information to the Pioneer Room so that it could be kept on file?
Yes, all the, all the naming processes that we have gone through so far, that information will get to Pioneer Room staff for permanent records.
Right, so that we've got, you know, a base that we can go to, to check on things. And I'm mentioning this because of some of the inadvertent confusion regarding Veterans Memorial Levy Park when we were thinking about a name change for that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think one thing, too, Chris, to point out is that we made a, kind of an internal res, we changed the policy a little bit by saying that all of these name changes will come through before the Park and Rec Committee of Council. And that was kind of a change in what we had originally intended, where we were just going to kind of go through this process, let the committee, the commission look at it first, and then kind of recommend a name, and then bring it forward to the council. So, Chris and I and the other committee members have discussed this and thought it'd be better just to have all these name changes roll through us as a committee first before it got to this point here at the, at the council meetings. So, we have that kind of in place, and that's going to be the plan going forward, because these are kind of sensitive topics, and we understand that. We want to make sure we're getting it right and that we're not just going out there and changing names just for the sake of changing names. So, we want to make sure that it's getting the full vetting process that we need to do. So, I wanted to bring that up as well. Thanks.
Well, thank you, councilmember, for bringing that up. I think that's important, and I think that the decision to vet that before a council committee, particularly the Parks Committee, I think is a very important part of the process. So, it does get that vetting out. And so, I appreciate the change that it's going forward to have that and kind of test the water, so to speak, at a council level, and see if that's something that we want to move forward. So, thank you for, for your work on that. I will just say that, you know, I had a few comments from some residents around the community, not all for this. They, they like. They like Sliv and all, but they all had different reasons in terms of what their philosophy was about name changes. And I just want to suggest that I'm sensitive to that, too. I think that's an important, you know, we all probably got some letters and emails about name changes, not just particularly Sliv's, but in general. But I think tonight, what we have before us is well warranted, and I think well within the means of what we're considering in honoring someone who did put much of, not just his working life, but his entire life on that arena. And I think probably every hockey game I've ever gone to, and I've been to a lot, I did not see Sliv there. So I think this is appropriate. I think that it's an honor that we've done before within the city in certain capacities, and so I'm proud to vote for it tonight. Okay? If there's no further discussion, we do have a motion before the body. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Okay, next, comments from the audience. Are there any comments from the audience tonight? Any comments? Welcome, Nick, and for the record, please give your name and address.
My name is Mike Tuckner. I'm a former Raider hockey player myself. Grew up, played thirteen years in the Hastings Hockey Booster Organization, and I'm here tonight just to back the name change of the arena. And like many of you said, there was some confusion over if it was going to be the entire arena or the entire grounds, but the East Rink, from my first ever practice when I was five years old, till the last day I ever played in that rink, he was always the first to say hello and the last to say goodbye, or the first to say goodbye, too. I mean, he was wonderful. If you couldn't afford to get your skate sharpened, he'd pay you to get them sharpened. If you needed equipment, he'd find a way to get you equipment. If you were a kid that wanted to play hockey and you couldn't find a way to get involved, he'd put you in contact with the Hockey Association and get help for those people that wanted to play. I was one of those kids. If it wasn't for Sliv and for everybody else who was involved in the Hastings Hockey Association, the Hastings Civic Arena, and just everybody involved with Hastings Hockey, none of us would be where we are right now when it comes to putting on a blue and gold sweater. Sliv was instrumental in that for many of us. Whether we were in kindergarten or whether we were seniors in high school, he treated us all the same. Whether we were an A player or whether we were a C player, he treated us the same way. We were all varsity players in his eyes, and I think that tonight, and with the recommendation and the support of our wonderful mayor and our city council, I just want to thank all of you for doing that, and from all Hastings hockey players, thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Well said. Thank you, Nick. Is there any other comments from the audience this evening? Okay, council announcements. We're on to announcements. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a couple meetings coming up on April, for heaven's sake. August 27, Thursday, Finance Committee meeting will, Finance Committee will meet at 7:30, and also on the 20th...
AM, right?
AM, yes, sorry. And at 6:30 PM, Hedra will be meeting here in chambers.
Okay. Thank you for that announcement. Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Mayor. This Thursday morning at 8:00 AM, I'll be attending the Dakota County Communications Center Board of Directors meeting. Again, for the public that doesn't know, that's our 911 center, which is located in Rosemount and handles pretty much all of the cities in the Dakota County area. So I'll be attending that again.
Okay. Thank you. Any further announcements? Now, I have a couple announcements. First of all, tomorrow night, Tuesday night, if you happen to see some fireworks go off in the second ward, it'll probably be because of the celebration of Councilmember Joe Balsanik's birthday, which is tomorrow. So happy birthday, Joe.
Oh, you heard from the Rochester Police Department, I take it?
Something like that.
From our Fourth of July celebration. Yes, we have a little bit of fireworks, pyrotechnics left over, so you may see something coming out of the ward.
Well, just be safe and have a happy birthday tomorrow.
Thank you very much. It's the 19th anniversary of my 50th birthday.
There we go. Excellent. Well, enjoy the day. Next, council on Tuesday, also tomorrow, in celebration of Joe's birthday, the HPC will be meeting at 7:00 PM at City Hall. And tomorrow night, also on Ward Two, will be Safe Summer Nights event. That's from 5:00 to 9:00 at Lyons Park. That's hosted by some state-owned businesses to promote safe neighborhoods. And so this is going to be at 5:00 to 9:00 tomorrow. Our Hastings Police Department will be there. It's at Lyons Park from 5:00 to 9:00, but the community is invited. It just happens to be at Lyons Park, but the community is invited to that, so please be there. On Monday, August 24, a week from tonight, the Planning Commission will be meeting here at City Hall at 7:00 PM. And on Tuesday, August 25, will be the next meeting of the Arts Task Force. They'll be meeting at 7:30 AM Tuesday, August 25, here at City Hall. On Thursday, August 27, our fine representative to the Red Rock Corridor Commission, Councilmember Vaughn, will be having a meeting at 4:30 at Newport City Hall with the Red Rock Corridor Commission. On Monday, September 7, we will not have our next council, oh, would you like to speak to that, Councilmember? Please.
That meeting was canceled.
That meeting was canceled?
That's correct.
Okay, so we will not have you at that meeting.
That's correct.
The next one, okay. Thank you. That's an update right there. That meeting was canceled. On Monday, September 7, is supposedly going to be our next council meeting, but we can't meet that day. It's a national holiday. So that'll be Labor Day, and on behalf of the city council, we wish everyone a very happy holiday. City offices will be closed then on Monday, September 7, and our next council meeting will be the next night on Tuesday, September 8, at 7:00 PM. Also on Tuesday, September 8, the Parks and Recreation Commission will also be meeting that day, and that'll be at the Joint Maintenance Facility at 6:00 PM. And again, our next council meeting will be Tuesday, September 8, at 7:00 PM due to the holiday. We have no further business before the council. A motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Alaji makes that motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you.